King on the moderator, I hear because town has witnessed a special town meeting. Return of notice states I hereby certify that against January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four, Jim Rupert left to keep the people in the town in the past morning to notice that special town meeting of town Bolton with Elizabeth C. Lars's town park. In further certifies that he has produced copy of this writing and letters to be published in the current newspaper having circulation in downtown Bolton. And Jim certifies that on January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four, he set upon a sign post within the limits of town and all other places designated by the town, the written copy of said will need all this signed by the poll of selectmen. In further certified that all the new drug acts were done by him and that means five days prior prior, five days prior before the holding of said meeting on February sixth, two thousand and twenty four. This notice was signed by Jim and certified by Elizabeth C. Lars. The town of Bolton call for special town meeting states that the legal voters of the town of Bolton are hereby warned and notified to meet the special town meeting at town hall. Two twenty two Bolton Center Road on Tuesday, February sixth, two thousand and twenty four, at six thirty P M. For the power of eight purposes. Number one, to authorize the approval of the remaining funds for two thousand and seventeen borrowing allocation for all education projects in Bolton Center School, twenty two, section A, four, of the restitution of town meeting, January twenty fifth, two thousand and seventeen, for the purposes of the replacement of the faculty room kitchen stove, energy management system and lockers to the extent of the remaining available funds, uh, to the extent that remaining available funds continue to be available for those approved purposes through December thirty first, two thousand and twenty four. And this call is dated in Bolton, the twenty third day of January, two thousand and twenty four, and signed by the selectmen. Jim?
Mr. Moderator, I have the big motion that we approve the, that call that you have just read for the special, the special town meeting to authorize the approval of the remaining funds to be transferred.
Just say anything, sir. All fair? Oh, I'm sorry. It's time, it's time.
You too, go home. Oh, you're on up.
In simple language, I think Jim has found some information and that perhaps is here from the Board of Education. What's going on is there is money allocated in two thousand and seventeen that didn't get spent. It has to be spent by a certain period of time, becoming a permanent period of time. And so it's important for the board to spend it where it goes back into the general fund.
He had a wedding in the first place at school. And the issue was that the date that they knew this spending party was during the school year. And if they do the work during the fall of school year, they will have some of the work at nighttime between overtime pass by extending the date to which they can spend it. They would be able to do the work during summer time and not in the middle of the week. Kristen, you know how much money I have. Otherwise, I can't do your.
Mister, do I not?
She can't, she can't hear. So, so somebody did reach out to, uh, the superintendent and this was a response that she responded. The funding amount for the first part of the BCS energy management upgrade is one hundred and sixty seven thousand, two hundred and eight dollars that remains in the bond. The DPS went up did, but BCS energy management system upgrade is all that did. There were also bad permits should there be enough funding in the bond for additional components to the first part of the project. By extending the bond out to be able to do more, the first part of the project potentially is a contract indicated that included a complete project by June thirty of two thousand and twenty four when the bond is currently likely to be spent on. A large amount of overtime had been deducted out of the first part of the project to keep it. We start project will not exceed the half million sixty seven. Yes. Based on this email, yes. I think that's an accurate. I, I, I don't, I don't have that. I don't have that, I don't have that special shooting fire. I believe that, I believe that Kristen did her, uh, required homework before she wrote the email and put an exact number in. She's not in the right place, but she did the homework, it's accurate. So those are remain, those are remaining unspent funds.
All in favor of the authorization for the remaining budget in two thousand and seventeen borrowing allocation for the school, section eight, for the purposes. The purpose of replacing the faculty room stove, the energy management system lockers, to the extent the remaining available funds continue to be available for the purposes through December thirty first, two thousand and twenty four, all in favor? All of us? Any questions in this town meeting is adjourned if anybody so moves.
All right, I'd like to cause meeting to order. Uh, the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, February sixth, two thousand and twenty four. It's in person and virtual at the town hall. And I think we first want to stand and pledge the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which expands our nation, our land, and everyone's world with liberty and justice for all. Uh, so before we start with the public comments, uh, I'd like everybody to, anybody who's speaking to keeping it within a three minute limit and try not to be repeating the same comments over and over. And we need you to stand up here and talk because the microphone is up here that picks you up. So.
Name and address.
And we need you to state your name and address. Uh, so is there anybody who'd like to speak on the public comments? Yes.
Yeah.
Me?
Yeah. We have also one online.
Oh, okay. I got one here first standing, sorry.
Right here. Uh, thank you. My name is Damian Beck, I live at one forty nine South Road. Uh, and we're here, uh, together with some neighbors, uh, to speak hopefully. Actually, we can't speak, but at least we're going to voice our concerns about the proposed parking lot on, on South Road. So I have a letter, I'm not a public speaker, so I could read the letter, uh, because otherwise I'm going to stutter and forget half the things. Uh, so if that's okay with you, I know you've got the copy, but maybe anybody else didn't and I could read that, if that's okay?
Yeah, or just hit the highlights if you want.
Uh, so, uh, this is me and my wife, our family, we're writing to express our deep concern and opposition to the proposal and establish, of establishing a public parking area on South Road, specifically in front of our property at one forty nine South Road. While we understand the need for public, for public facilities, we firmly believe that this particular location poses serious threats to both property values and safety of residents, especially our small children. One of our primary concern and negative impact this proposed public parking would have on our, on the value of our property. The presence of parking area in a close proximity could deter potential buyers and significantly diminish the market value of our home. This is a matter of great importance as it directly affects the financial well being of our family. Moreover, the safety of our children in Paramount. We have a three and a seven year old boys who currently enjoy playing ball and riding their bikes in the front yard due to the limited space we have in the backyard. The proposed parking, uh, area directly in front of our driveway poses considerable risk to their well being. There is no control over food and power, potentially jeopardizing the safety of our kids. Another risk factor is the non-coming traffic speeding down the hill towards Route Six, which we previously reported. The risk extends not only to our children, but also to cars pulling out of the proposed parking and members of the park, of the public trying to cross the road to access the tracks. We also echo concerns raised by the Board of Selectmen regarding undesirable activities in public spaces, which was discussed during previous meetings regarding other potential sites for public parking. The potential for people to congregate and engage in activities such as smoking and drinking during nighttime is troubling. This is not only, this is not optimizing safety and peace of mind of residents, but also raises the question about the town's ability to effectively manage and monitor such spaces. We encountered issues at the small hulover area at South Road a few years ago where drug deals were taking place. Uh, despite reporting it to the resident state trooper, I don't believe, by the way, that's, uh, state trooper that's, that's with us right now. No action was ever taken and we were left with two choices, get used to it or address the problem on our own. In addition, people often posit that location to take care of their physiological elimination needs. We are concerned that the introduction of the public parking may worsen this issue affecting the entirety of the road. Furthermore, the persistent problem of trash on that stretch of the road is disparted. The presence of, presence of the public parking area will exacerbate this issue, leading to a decline in overall aesthetic and cleanliness of the neighborhood. I am disappointed that the town has not taken into consideration how this proposed parking, public parking area would impact our lives and our property. My family and I carefully selected this property for its seclusion and privacy, which are now at the risk of being compromised. Additionally, the lot size was crucial factor for us as we have plans to build additions in the near future to accommodate our growing family. Unfortunately, these plans are now on hold due to a potential impact of the town's proposed changes. We kindly urge the Board of Selectmen to reconsider the location of the public parking and take into account the valid concerns raised by residents in the affected area. This is my sincere hope that the Board will prioritize the well being and concerns of the community and our kids and explore alternative locations that are less likely to negatively impact the lives and properties of the residents. For instance, the space on Stony Road would offer ample parking without impacting any residential properties. Thank you for your attention to this matter, my trust that your decision will be the one that reflects the best interest of the community. We also have a little petition, if I can turn it over to you guys. I don't think anybody else is interested in signing it, I think we got it all the night first. So I don't know if I can just, yeah, no. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Damian. Thank you, Damian, well done. Sandy? You're up.
Sorry, took me a second to unmute. I have two things, um, tonight. First of all, um, the registrars had hoped to be on your agenda tonight to talk about, um, the emergency plan. Um, I understand it looks like you've got a long agenda and we're on the agenda for Thursday night. I would request that Jim distribute to you our plans as soon as possible and that you review them and if there are questions to reach out through Jim back to the registrars. The reason for this is that if there are revisions that need to be made, we will have to agree on them on Thursday evening and get them incorporated and filed with the Secretary of State no later than four P M. on Friday or be subject to personal penalties. So, um, if Jim, you could make that happen for us and if the members of the Board of Selectmen could review that and get back to Jim with any questions or concerns they might have.
They're here, they're here on the table for them, Sandy.
Excellent, excellent, thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
And, uh, secondly, um, I noticed in your minutes of January sixteenth that you approved the Rose Farm lease at, um, an increase. Um, I'm suggesting that you consider the correct name of that facility. Um, it's no longer referred to as the Rose Farm. Um, and should, uh, a question come up as to exactly what the farmer is leasing, which is the fields at the Heritage Farm, um, that you correct your minutes and the lease itself if it already hasn't been executed. So, thank you for listening.
Thanks, Sandy. Next, uh, anybody else, Jim?
Jim Aldrich, thirty five hand over Farnes Road. Uh, I've come several times before to talk to you about, uh, the pay and benefit package for the first selectment, starting that last September, uh, through Grapevine, I read your minutes, I saw Sandy commented on it the other day. Um, I have, I believe there's going to set up a subcommittee to explore that. But I've just been trying to follow the status of it, I don't want to waste your time, it'd be redundant, keep coming here, but I was on the charter commission, that was much more than a two year effort. We had lengthy discussions about incorporating a charter, pay changes for the first selectment. It was decided to leave it up to the selectmen after the fact. I can assert my duty to close out this topic and I just don't want to be wasting your time. If you could please let me know when it's going to be on your agenda, uh, when I have the opportunity to meet with the subcommittee on this. I just don't know how it's proceeding and it has to go through due process, so I'm here tonight to just make sure I'm included on whatever plan is for that. I, I do think you're going to have a conversation on this topic, is that right?
Uh, tonight?
No, no, sometime.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Jim. Uh, is there anybody else who'd like to speak under public comment?
I will.
Rob Goring?
Uh, my letter's similar but different to Damian's, so.
Just state your address.
Rob Goring, one two six South Road.
Thank you.
I'm writing you this letter not only to voice my stance against the public parking area in South Road, but because I'm against the entire project moving forward at all. There's so many trails in the area already, where does it end? How would you like it if the public was given access to the back of your properties? Some may say, no problem, but that's the easy thing to say if you're not actually faced with the problem. Try to picture, picture yourselves in that position. It'd be safety and security issue for anyone property near or bordering above the path, as well as possibly some of the users due to the remoteness of the proposed trail. There's no way to control who uses these trails and there will always be a certain number of people with bad intentions. Let's not make it easy for them. There's also some hunting and or target shooting that happens in some of the privately owned areas large enough to allow. Is it safe to have the public in these areas? For the seven and a half years I've been at this location, I'm constantly picking up garbage between one forty six and my house, one twenty six. This is very likely to get worse for the public parking area. There's also a dangerous blind hill area exiting my driveway and going left and close to all some people speeding down over the hill. Would this be safe for parking area pedestrians crossing the road? Also, it seems there's a small number of people that are for this trail that make most of the noise for it. What about the rest of us? I never could have imagined that public theft could happen when I got my dream property in two thousand and sixteen. If this goes forward, it won't be the same. This location is chosen for privacy, security and seclusion. Thanks for reading.
Thank you, Rob. Well, is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Meeting, I'm Trudy Mitchell, other than one twenty two South Road. Dear members of the Board of Selectmen and selectmen, in July this year, I will have lived on South Road in Bolton for fifty years. While I appreciate the efforts the town has made to keep the atmosphere of community intact, I have serious concerns about the proposal to convert the scenic area bordering Pop River on South Road into a parking lot. As many residents of South Road have discovered in their daily walks, the area around the entrance to Pop River and the grassy area above it has always attracted loiterers who leave behind nip bottles of alcohol, fast food containers, cigarette ends and additional debris. In an effort to maintain the beauty of the area, residents collect the litter, but the problem is ongoing, providing a cleared space for those looking to loiter for reasons that have nothing to do with hiking, will exacerbate the problem exponentially and inviting unsavory element into our community. It is important to note that in the house nearest to the area of the proposed parking lot, with three children under the age of ten whose parents chose this neighborhood because it is the safe place to let the children play outdoors. Likewise, the community members whose properties bordered the path in the woods will have no way of monitoring or controlling activity so close to their homes, especially at night. Nor will they have a sense of security in allowing children to play on their own yards unattended. Within a five mile radius of South Road, there are exceptional rails to trails, hiking opportunities that offer people parking. If people wish to walk the path along South Road, public parking at Bolton Notch already exists. I've spoken to the police about the speed of drivers coming up South Road from New East Six. There have been many times while walking that it was wise to step well off the road as cars and motorcycles round the bend precisely where the proposed parking lot is to go. There are deep wrecks in the grass, but there by people parking there at night or from cars taking wide turns at high speeds. Because the hiking community has access to so many wide, unobstructed trails that minimize ticket exposure and allow access to police vehicles in case of emergencies, imposing the parking lot into the rural nature of our community would seem redundant. For the residents of South Road, it would pose severe safety issues to a child friendly community. Thank you.
Thank you, Trudy. Anybody else like to speak? Other public comments still open?
Is the public able to ask questions for clarification?
Uh, would, not to us. No.
Okay.
Not as the board, no. There's no dialogue.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I'll stand up quickly as I'm, I don't really know, but, uh, my name is Cynthia Russell Williams. I'm also at one twenty seven South Road and, uh, my neighbors collectively, we all have the same issues and concerns, but I just wanted to add that as a parent in the area, you know, I have many of the same concerns that my neighbors do. But I also want to note that there does seem to be an increase in the number of people who drive by slowly late, late, late at night or early, early in the morning, um, people walking in, opening up our doors even though they're locked. I have a dog who suddenly starts barking in the middle of the nights. I don't know how many people are out, you know, walking casually in the middle of the night, but that does seem to be increasing. My fear is that, uh, a parking lot that makes it easier for people to stop and I mean relatively unnoticed because it is a legitimate parking lot is just going to increase the number of these sorts of scenarios where people may be, I hate to use the word, but casing our houses. Um, I know up and down our road, we've had plenty of people, you know, reporting that their cars are being broken into, at least people walking by, checking out if the cars are open. And as a resident, I would rather not increase the potential of that happening more. So I don't want to reiterate everything that everybody's already said, they hold all the same issues. I do not want to walk on my road because of the speed of the traffic. I stopped running on my road several years ago because the cars are just going faster and faster and faster. And, uh, it's just not safe place. If I were someone parking in that spot, I also would be concerned because it would be a very, very unsafe spot to park. Trying to bring children across the road to go up into the, um, hiking area if that's where they're headed, it would be a bad spot to be and I would hate to see ramifications of some person getting their car hit or, or let a child be hit too. So it's not just us, it's the people who could potentially be there as a visitor to the town. So that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you, Cynthia. Well done. Uh, anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak? Okay, so that ends our public comment. Uh, we'll go on to number three, which is correspondence.
Yeah.
Correspondence. Uh, so I've got, like, there's copies of the, all these letters down there and I think there was one additional one. Uh, so I have a letter here from, it's pretty short, I'll just read it. The new town offices on Nachro Municipal Center site are not yet well known to the people of Bolton. Would you please offer the community a tour of the new facility? A well-publicized early evening tour scheduled for sometime between March first and April fifteenth would be greatly appreciated. With supporting print, uh, printed handout that clarifies what branches of Bolton government reside there. Who represents each branch and their contact information? Thank you, Richard Treat, was dated January twenty fifth, uh, eight Lyman Road. Okay, that takes care of that. Uh, so next, uh, number four, we have some appointments. I, I'd like to thank everybody for speaking. It's well done and I appreciate your comments. We have an appointment to make of, uh, William Call for our new fire marshal. We had, um, an interview with him and, and he has been with the town of Bolton for quite some time already. And he was kind of like a very good fit. It's a part-time job, twenty, you want to take over from there, you'll.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, you know, currently it's twelve hours a week, we're able to, uh, we, we were able to get statutorily compliant with that number of hours a week and we remained statutorily compliant with our inspection and testing program. And, uh, Mr. Call, under my direction as the fire marshal, was very instrumental in leading that charge. Uh, it, it was with the support of the Board of Selectmen and the Fire Commission, uh, that that happened. Uh, we really needed a budget, we needed man hours. And, um, you know, the Board of Selectmen recognized that without being statutorily compliant, there was an element of exposure to the town or situations that might arise based on the lack of fire marshal inspection. Um, we've also been able to enhance the services that the fire marshal's office, uh, is able to give the town of Bolton and its residents over the last several years. The fire prevention program has become much more robust, um, including, but not limited to the poster contest with the children at the Bolton Center School and those posters are now judged by our seniors at the senior center. Uh, they don't know whose posters they are, there's no names on them, there's just numbers. We've been successful in having a couple of our students actually, uh, have their posters included on the state fire prevention calendar. The fire prevention program for seniors has really taken off. We put together a knox box program where people who are elderly or infirm that may have medical issues can get a box that's owned by the town to hang over their door so that if the fire department has to get into their home, they don't have to break in. They can use a key that's in a special box to be able to unlock the box on a resident's home and access the home. So there's been a lot of great things that have happened in the fire marshal's office. And, um, I think it's important to note that, you know, the appointment of Mr. Call as fire marshal comes with my endorsement, comes with the endorsement of the, the Bolton Fire Commission and members of the interview plant panel, which includes myself, Mr. Fornier, Mr. Mora and, uh, Mr. McKinnon, who is our chief building official.
Uh, and I believe he resides right behind that petition there.
Yep, that's his, that's where, that's where he hides, he's in that corner next to Sparky.
So.
He's not there. He's not there tonight.
So, I mean, we want, we want to congratulate, uh, William Call and with that, I'm moving Bolton to approve, uh, Bill William, Bill Call to be Bolton's fire marshal, a. to be Bolton's Fire Marshal, a gentleman who's eminently qualified for the position.
Second?
Uh, call in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Any discussion? Seven, seven zero. Just congratulations, William Call.
His first run.
So the next appointment is for, uh, Deputy Fire Marshal James Quish. Um, so I guess with the appointment of the fire marshal, what happens is Jim Rupert was the fire marshal up until this point, and so he's being replaced by William Call. So I'd like to thank Jim for his years of, uh, providing us as fire marshal. The charter change, uh, made so that he couldn't hold both positions, so. And so back to the appointment of James Quish, who's not here as well. You want to say anything about James Quish?
So, uh, Mr. Quish is, is currently serving as our assistant building official. Uh, and assume, assuming that this appointment goes through, he will act as our deputy fire marshal. Um, Mr. Quish, uh, comes to us with many years of experience. He was a battalion chief and a fire inspector in, in his life as a, a professional paid firefighter. Uh, after retiring from the fire service, he became a trainer for the state of Connecticut, where he trained individuals to become building officials and fire marshals. And so his code knowledge is second to none, and we, we, we felt that the two of these gentlemen working together, that their skill sets were very complementary of each other. And we believe that we're fortunate to have both men serving as a team in the, in these two roles.
With that said, I'd like to move the, um, appointment of James Quish to be Bolton's Deputy Fire Marshal.
Second?
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, uh, seven nothing. Uh, congratulations to James Quish. Uh, next, we move on to the approval of minutes.
Ms. Jen, may I ask, at this time, we have people here looking to speak, that we move the minutes to the last part of the meeting? Uh, and we move on with item number six.
All in favor?
I'll second that motion.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passed seven, nothing. We're going to move number five into number twelve.
Yes, Mr. Dixon? Yes, absolutely.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Dixon, seventy-two, Tinker Pond Road, I'm also your fire chief. Tonight, with the appointments of, uh, Jim Quish as deputy fire marshal and Bill Call with the Fire, uh, Fire Commission and Fire Chief, we're very much in favor of the education and the experience of both these gentlemen to help us propel us forward, okay? There's also something else probably going to happen in town. Maybe you can help me out. There's a, on Facebook, everything free on Facebook or something? Some website to give stuff away? Well, the gentleman at center of the table has probably got something to hand away pretty soon. It's called a coat or a hat. Because with the charter change, a lot of his hats have disappeared. We go to the building inspector, go to a fire marshal, so he's just going to sit and chair as town administrator and do an excellent job for us. But with that also, I think it should be known, over the last fourteen years, Jim's been a fire marshal for Tom Bolton, okay? Um, done a fantastic job, propelled us a long ways from where we were in the beginning. We had a couple of fire marshals in the past, did a good job, but he really brought the program to forefront. And so on behalf of the Fire Commission and Fire Department, I'd like to present a plaque to it today. This is Bolton Fire Commission, Bolton Fire Department present to Fire Marshal James Rupert. In appreciation for your leadership, administrative support, and collaboration, which contributed to the positive development of the Bolton, uh, Fire Marshal's office while watching over the protection and safety of the citizens of Bolton during your fourteen years of service. Jim Rupert, congratulations.
I want to read it first. Thank you, guys.
So now we're going to move on to number six, ongoing business. So we have a updated business plan, a master business plan for the, is that the Heritage Farm Commission? And.
Get two for one.
You get a two for, okay.
So, Beth Harding, Beth Harding, one seventy-six Fulton Center Road, um, found the farm commission since inception. Early in the end of sixth century road, also on the heritage farm commission since its inception. So back in February twenty twenty, uh, we submitted a formal business plan for the farm. Um, after many years of trying to figure out where we were headed and what had been done. Um, and at that night when the business plan was approved, it was requested that periodically we would provide updates to the plan. Um, COVID and, and a number of other things interfered, so four years later, here we are, here you're an update. What I'm going to, um, be highlighting from is in your packet. Um, so you should have had a chance to read it already, so I'm not going to, you know, read it verbatim. Um, but despite three years of COVID, we did actually accomplish quite a bit during that time period. Most significantly, um, in June of twenty twenty-two, we presented a master plan for the site development of the farm. And these boards represent the, the summary of that, of that effort. Um, it was a consultant-driven project, um, Milton Edwards Architects with Elmore Design Collaborative, who was our landscape architect, passed the public archaeology survey team and some consulting engineers to try to get at the, the meat of what we needed to do in order to develop that site. The goal is expanded public use of the facilities, both the grounds and the buildings, um, with an understanding of the fact that, you know, there's no current budget attached to that effort. It's going to be a phased project over as many years as it takes to get us where we would like to be, which is the town having a, a greater opportunity to use the buildings and the grounds and for the town to also be able to benefit from some financial assistance to maintain the property over the long term. So that was basically the goal in writing the plan. In addition to that, and I, we'll leave these boards up here so that you can take a look at them. Um, they, they reference a couple of things I think that are significant. Um, right now, the, the farm does have potable water. That was the result of a grant from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, the Bolton Gumi Fund. Um, that effort took place last year, and Jim told us last week that due to the nature of the small number of people that will be using the water during that time period, we don't have to go through any more formal testing, so that water is available. It's seasonal only and it's also locked off, so it will be primarily to support events that take place at the farm. But there is a hydrant and the well has been reactivated and potable water is available. That's a huge improvement for down-the-road ability to develop the farm. The, what you see over here, you recognize the existing barn, the milk shed, the, the silo. This would be a new building, um, new construction. It's a sanitation building, including toilet rooms, electricity, um, but a public water supply that would allow us to do some, to events and, you know, utility space, allows to do some development at the farm. Um, that would have to be built, um, designed and built as a result of grants that have still to be applied for. Um, what you can see way over here in the corner, this is a, a tent, which was, you know, part of our original discussion. It would mean recreating and filling in the existing newer pit that's there, which is an unsafe situation, everybody agrees. Um, we actually met with a couple of local contractors, just, um, was it yesterday? Okay, sorry, long days. Um, who, who would be interested in bidding on that work. Think there's going to be tremendous amount of expense involved. However, we still will have to go out for some grant monies in, in order to accommodate that. And we're not prepared to share details of that with you, but that is a project that we are pursuing in an ongoing way. Um, the farm is also part of the Loatzip Walkable Connectivity Project that's been going on in town. Phase one was Fulton Center Road connecting to Town Hall. Phase two is Town Hall through the farm. Phase three, should it come to be, is continuing on to the high school. Um, phase two is in design at this point, and we just wanted to highlight the fact that our landscape architect and our primary architect did a lot of work to review where the path should go in order to provide the best view sheds for the farm, um, the most walkable space. And part of that is in this design. It also helps to connect to handicap access to the building, handicap parking spaces, improvements to the parking lot, and also the driveway. So as the design proceeds with the phase two, we just wanted to reiterate that work has already been done on that as part of the master site development plan. And in fact, the consultants who worked on that submitted a proposal. If you needed their assistance, they would be more than happy to continue to be involved in that project on the forward. Which is also within the cap, yeah, you also have to talk me back. We also were able to get a grant from the National Park Service to put up the interpretive signs that are up against the barn right now. Those will probably be relocated once the path is complete, so they would go somewhere out here, but right now they're right up against the barn. As part of that, um, National Park Service grant, they also wanted us to host an event at the farm, which would highlight the Rochambeau Connection, the French-American Connection for the Revolution. And we took it upon ourselves to do that. It happened last October. We had various regiments, including a regiment Burguene, which is a French-based regiment. Um, and they had a reenactment at the farm. Um, also, last summer, we hosted the Digging into History Program, which was the Connecticut State Library and the state archaeologists. They found some wonderful artifacts, um, which we are hoping to bring back to Bolton, and we are pursuing a grant to get a small display case. We met with Liz Thornton in the library. She's told us where it can go, so now we know how big it can be. And we will be pursuing some funding from Connecticut, Connecticut Humanities Council to pursue that initiative. And we don't want to forget anything. Oh, we still have a little bit more money in the, uh, National Park Service grant to hoping to nail down some wayfinding signs so that people from outside the community can get their way to the farm. We understand the town is also pursuing a STEEP grant, which would provide community septic system up at the farm. And we are excited about that and look forward to hearing more about that project as it progresses. Um, and just finally, we had two more Eagle Scout projects up at the farm. Um, in twenty twenty, Joey Gersten put trail signs, which highlight the history and ecology. In twenty twenty-one, Eddie Steele did a flower garden at the V entrance to the farm. And also, um, Bike Walk Bolton is proposing to replace the water bars that are on the trail in the woods um, because they have disintegrated over the twenty-plus years since they were installed. Um, and so we continue to be thrilled with these volunteer efforts that support activities that go on at the farm. Anything else you want to mention?
I think I would just like to mention that, um, as the, the commission is always open for anybody to call us and ask questions, uh, especially with the Loatzip grant that's coming through and all the potential, uh, projects that could happen on the farm. Um, it will impact everything that we do as you move forward. So we hope that this becomes a worthy document. It's electronic, the, um, the site, um, the business plan is also in this, so if you want one document. Remember the first time Bob Cyrus, he goes, you can't expect me to get through this in one day?
I'll read the pictures.
Got lots of great photographs and pictures, worth a thousand words. It's a, it's going to be a good reference. Um, Sarah and Sarah Nelson, Tom Almore, and all of us several years into this, and there's a lot of thought behind it. Um, and we hope that you will use it. And if anybody has questions on our thoughts, um, they are an advisory committee that you have established. And we hope to be able to fill those shoes for you. Um, can't think of much.
One, one more thing I did forget to mention, we have been, um, discussing the, um, the farmhouse with Roger Barrett. Um, he went into the basement and underneath the L and identified some structural work that needs to be done before any other improvements would be done at the house. And he is, uh, you know, going to be delivering a proposal to us. You may or may not be aware, the historical society has just reactivated their five oh one C three status, and so now they're eligible for a whole nother range of grant opportunities. Plus, they've also got some money to dedicate to that effort, so we will be pursuing, you know, how do we stabilize the farmhouse? So more about that in coming months, but just want to let you know.
One concern I do have with the, with the STEEP grant and the shared septic system is, um, also been sitting on planning and zoning for a very long time. And it came, when the shared system came before planning and zoning many years ago, at the time, there was no plan for the farm. And consequently, what happened was planning and zoning decided not to include any future use of the house and barn into the shared septic because there were no guest destinations in their numbers. So if this, um, septic system does not have to go back before planning and zoning because it's previous and then, okay. My concern is that, um, the farm, the barn, the house, the future use has not been considered in the previous approval. And I just would be, um, very upset with down the road. Somebody denied the farm access wherever to get a toilet facility and whatnot. I would hate to see the farm denied access because it was not in the original approval. So whether or not this has to go back before planning, we don't know. Um, with the potential for the new town hall to now be over by the, where the municipal centers, the capacity is there. I don't foresee the farm to ever exceed the capacity of the, of the town hall. So it's not a capacity issue, it's more of a technical issue. That is a concern that we do have, so.
We are going to get there, folks. It, it may not be in our life. But we're, we're not giving up.
I'd just like to say a very special thank you to the Farm Commission and to Sandy Pierrot, uh, who was tonight, but still, um, her efforts as well in past years. It has been an act of love and it has been a passion that has enriched this town. And a lot of people know this town because of that farm and how they use it for passive recreation, for active recreation. And sometimes just watching the sunset as you're driving up the hill is breathtaking. So just a very special thank you to all, because it is volunteer hours. Uh, we have another member here as well. That's me, Henry. My apologies. Um, and, um, it's a big thank you.
You reminded me of one more thing. I know my team are three minutes. Quantitatively, do we get six? So anyway.
This is a public speaker.
As most of you know, and maybe some of you do not know, we are part of the Washington Rochambeau Revolutionary Route. Uh, better, will soon be known as the Warlow Route, which in twenty twenty-six is going to be, uh, the National Park Service will be formally dedicating the route as it has Patriot Trail and some of its others. And in preparation for twenty twenty-six, there's, uh, a lot of planning and a lot of interest in Bolton and the farm and the fact that it's. Johnny Carolyn, which is a name that June's well familiar with, has had monthly meetings for almost a year now, just for information and updates. The, um, Connecticut Humanities Council mentioned, we had a meeting with them the other day, they mentioned. we had a meeting with them the other day, they mentioned things that are happening. It may be something to think about to have a, a committee that is aware of planning issues in the coming 2026, um, event when our country celebrates its 250th anniversary. Just a bug in your ear because there, there, there's a lot of things.
A lot of activities going on and there's money.
And, yeah, so.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
But one of the things for those that may not know is one of the values to this farm is that it has been farmed consistently since pre-revolutionary times. And they are included in the French map with Washington Rochambeau. The beautiful stone walls that you see today are on those maps from 1780.
Prior to 1780.
Right, yeah. But on those maps.
Right, yep.
We have dated those. And so it has a, an extremely high historical value because of its preservation as it stands back for that particular purpose. And now these dates that are coming up, it's very exciting for those who are historians.
We are the most pristine site on the route, the only on 12th site in Connecticut.
And the route is 606 and up.
Those are important too. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And there is.
Nice, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Tim?
I apologize. I need to excuse myself for the remainder of the meeting.
Okay. You are excused.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So on to new business. A, we're going to consider an act on the grant for the parking lot on South Road. So I think you would like to.
I, I could start that off if.
Yeah, we'll do it. Yep.
I think we've got a few things going on here. Um, one is that, uh, that our engineering firm has not presented us with a design or an estimate for the parking.
They did. I asked them to fill out the descent office morning.
I did not see it. So we, I don't think any of us have it, which means we don't, tonight, we can't take action on it without, without seeing that. So, um, so that, that's, that's one thing. Um, the other, the concerns that the residents have expressed through letters and, and what we heard here tonight fall into a couple of different categories. Um, one is the category of safety on the road, which is, um, definitely a legitimate concern. I think I, uh, in order for me to understand how dangerous that stretch is, um, I'd have to have some professional information given, given to us. Because when I was out there, it seems like this line, the sightlines are good. It seems like it's a, it's a long stretch. And when cars were going by, they were slowing down as they reached the bottom and went around the curve. So I would, I just can't say, I'm not, I don't have the knowledge to know whether, how dangerous that, that area is. Um, the other, um, set of concerns that I heard are, um, ones that I think that we really have to, we could pay attention to, but I think there's a balancing act here. Um, we're talking about a group of, of neighbors who are concerned about use of public land that belongs to the town. And their concerns are based on proximity to their, to their homes. And so we have to think, well, proximity to their homes, how, how does that weigh against the opening up 153 acres of publicly owned property to the rest of the residents of Bolton and, um, surrounding towns who might want to come and use this amazing asset? Because it really is, is an amazing and amazingly beautiful asset. I, I did a little bit of, uh, looking back to the, uh, plan. This, I have a map here that's, um, online. It's part of the BSC group who did the, the consultants who did the work on the, um, a few years ago. I, no, sorry, I can't, because then not everybody's going to have access to it. So, so sorry. And I looked at some of the distances that are shown on the map to, to houses. First, if you, the, the widest point on South Road, the widest part of frontage on South Road where we're talking, where, where it fronts on South Road is 670 feet from the north boundary to the south boundary. So if you picture putting a trail in there about halfway, we're talking about maybe, it would be maybe 350 feet or so, um, between the north boundary and the south boundary. And then the property gets a little bit more narrow to the point of maybe 450 feet. So if you center the, a trail between the north and south boundaries, you're talking about, um, like 225 feet from north to south. And, um, from the house on, um, at 121 South Road, the, the Malone residents, they were, um, they had submitted a letter in opposition. The BSC map shows 441 feet from a possible trail location to, to the house. Um, the Breerly House at 131 South Road, the map shows 219 feet from a possible trail to the house. Uh, Mr. Peck's house, uh, it's showing, this map is showing 372 feet from a possible trail location. And I'm saying possible because the trail can be located wherever we want to locate it. It doesn't have to be located the way the consultant showed it. Excuse me. 372 feet between, uh, from the, a possible trail location to the house. So in, in my opinion, we have to say, well, I mean, what, what distance is far enough? You know, would, would neighbors say a trail has to be a thousand feet? Or it has to be a mile or it has to be 1,500 feet? You know, I think that these distances are very reasonable. And, um, we should not be taking the position that it, because neighbors are concerned about, I mean, their, uh, concerns are, are legitimate. But, um, privacy concerns and people wandering into other people's ba- uh, backyards are proven not to be the case with trails that go near neighborhoods. And there are, there are a number of trails in Bolton, um, on properties owned by the Bolton Land Trust that neighbors could go and check out. They go a lot closer to houses and backyards than this trail would be. There's a trail, um, on the, uh, in the back of the High Ridge Farm subdivision, where the trail goes pretty close. Um, also off of Coconie, off of the end of Coconie, uh, there's, the trail goes fairly close to the neighborhood there. And the same with off, off of Castle Rock. So these are areas you could go, you could look at, uh, how close the trails go. You could talk to the people in those areas. Uh, the Bolton Land Trust has never received a complaint of people coming from trails onto property and damaging property. The people who use trails are the kind of people who just want to be out in the woods and they are not looking for, um, to be, to be vandals. There was one other thing I was going to say too. Shoot, it, that, it, it, it's, uh, my last, my last point slipped, slipped my mind. But there, so, um, there is historically, um, trail use is hiking, hiking trails. And then we're talking about a hiking trail, a two-person wide hiking trail, not with no disturbed, uh, ground either. I'm not sure if there's a mis, a misperception that this would be like a, the multi-use trail that goes through Bolton and Manchester. It would, it would just be a, a walking trail. So the, it would be low impact to the ground. And, um, you know, just used by people who are out there wanting to enjoy the woods. And, um, so, okay, I think I, I think I've said what I, what I want to say. And, and maybe at some point I'll remember the thing that I forgot to say.
Yes.
Thank you, Gwen. I'm, um, I'm sitting here listening to and actually have read the letters from the citizens who, who live in the area. And one of the major points they brought out wasn't so much the trail, it was the parking area and the impact that having those cars there and having them there at God knows when and where and at what times is really a greater issue. And we're not talking about whether we have a trail or not. There's a trail there. The, the question is, we're, we've been looking to find a parking space that would accommodate trail users, but also be, you know, sensitive to either businesses or residents in the area. Well, here's an issue where, um, we're, you know, we have to consider the impact to the residents and not so much the trail, but the impact of having the cars there, the people who are there and, and so on. One of the points that we talked about and when we had talked about, when I actually even had looked at, up by Munson was, all right, what happens at night? Is there, and who knows who's go there, who doesn't go there? And that's, and that's your concern. I mean, it's a legitimate concern. Like it or not, you may, it may sound like you're being overly, but you're not. In the world we live in today, and I've lived in it a long time, things have changed. And we have to, and, and we have to consider these factors in the decisions that we make. I, and I think it's important that we do have a location so that we can utilize this trail. This may not be the location. I think we have to look at it a lot closer and really consider what these folks have to say. Because right now, um, it, it, for me, it, it made an impression that this may not be the location that we, we put this. And, um, that's right. Thank you.
Pam?
Uh, there are two factors. Uh, one of them is, uh, putting the parking, and I believe the proposal for the parking is on the east side of the border. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that is how close to the stream?
Uh, I'd say 75 to 100 feet maybe from the stream, something like that.
Uh, one of the things I would ask though, then, uh, because of the, that proximity, uh, would it be please contact the US Army Corps of Engineers, uh, before we proceed any further, uh, in spending dollars? Because one of the things that they say that they recommend that you apply as early as possible in the project planning stages, this particular brook feeds into a Class A water system that has a lot of human pressure on it. And they look at the length of the least practical, practical damaging alternatives. Uh, when they look at, um, the permitting, the government must apply also. It's not, it's for municipalities as well as private citizens to apply. And, um, I did download their cheat sheet. If, uh, and I'd like to share that so that we can, but look at that. Uh, the second part is the danger on that particular curve. Um, we did have the big truck accident there recently, uh, at your home.
Yes.
That, um, caused a major environmental spill. And, um, I would like to liken this to not being able to see on Steel's Crossing. I have twice almost hit someone crossing Steel's Crossing when I've come around the corner and I know it's there. I'm very aware of that. And it's a very frightening spot. And I traverse it because of where family is and where Town Hall is from my home. I think it's a, that's a horrible parking area. It's well-used. It's a wonderful resource. But that curve and that road where that many people cross without blinking lights and all sorts of way ahead of time, it's, it's just very, I think, very dangerous. I'm surprised there haven't been, uh, an accident at that particular spot. I am very concerned when I think a very valid point was brought up with having the parking on the east side of the road and having people cross the road to get to the direction that we have for this particular trail. And that is to head westbound. So you have to cross from the parking, you have to cross the road and then you have to cross back. And it would require a lot of signage and marking. And, um, so those are my two points that I'd like to make this evening. I would like to thank Gwen for all of her effort on this and I understand it. And I am in a budding bone.
May I say something? Um, we also, Mather and Brett Maerson and I were out there. We looked, we did look at a spot on the west side of South Road and we'll reconsider that. It's a, it's a, it would require, um, construction. Like not, it's pretty flat, but it would, uh, trees would have to be removed. Um, but it could be used. It could be, it would be a turn in. Instead of the, this one, we were thinking simple, not very expensive. I'm not sure that there'd be any, the, the only disturbed ground that we were talking about would be to excavate out some of the topsoil and put gravel in. I'm talking about the proposal where the, the nose to nose along on the, on the east side. If we were to shift our focus to the, to the west side, that would require some grading and some removal of trees and some kind of a, um, some, some gravel put down as a base. We could look at that too. I'm not sure how much work Jim Dillon has done, Joe Dillon has done on this side street parking though. You know, I think the, the more that we keep, well, anyway, I'm, I'm very willing to explore other options. I'm just not willing to let this sit for another, you know, eight years, the way it has so far.
Do you have a proposed budget?
No.
In, in your head, I mean, in, in your mind's eye?
Well, the whole, I, I was hoping to be able to apply for this grant through the recreational trails program.
What were you going to apply for?
We don't know because of Jo, Joe's, uh, plan didn't come in.
I see the reason.
So I have no, I have no clue as to what his estimate is. And I was, that's, that's due March 11th. At this point, I'm not, I mean, we're going to have to, if we want, if we're willing to look at it, uh, at his proposal, we would have to set, uh, put it on a special meeting agenda because it also has to go in front of P and Z, uh, they're meeting February 14th. And it needs, it needs their approval. And then I would have to get, um, support letters, you know, so it's, the time is really shrinking on this. And, you know, we, we hear boards all the time saying, aren't there grants out there for that? Aren't there grants? Can you get money from somewhere? And, you know, here, the town has an opportunity to go and seek some, some grant funding. And it's like, we're, we're stuck in the mud and I.
State or federal grant?
Uh, this is a state, state grant. This is the one that I had asked the, the prior board to apply for in the spring. Same program when we were looking at parking off of Route 6.
It was a year ago, right?
No, actually, well, yeah, no, no, no. It was, uh, March of 2023.
2023, yeah.
Yeah. Just, yeah, then, then they opened up the grant round again with another, they funded, it was funded with another $10 million. Highly competitive program. There was lots of programs, lots of applications.
So is this the only time it's been done two years in a row? Like, do we not anticipate this opportunity to be available in the future or?
There was a long, there were maybe three to five years where that program was not funded. And then it was funded, uh, 2022, I believe, 2023, 2024. So who, who knows? I don't, I don't know what the, what the future is. So, I mean, I think if we've got it, if we, if we want to move on this, we've either got to, you know, we've got to get Joe's information circulated quickly, have a special meeting to really discuss the, the details of it and then decide whether, whether we want to apply.
And for, you'd have to have it Friday, 14th.
Well, before that.
Not waiting for it. Which is next Wednesday.
We, we'd have to, we'd have to ask to be put on the agenda by Friday this week, which we can, which we could do.
You can always ask and just not be, I would assume.
I, I apologize. The information from Joe came in late yesterday and I asked it to be distributed this morning, but I was not here to see that it was done.
Okay.
So I apologize that it didn't happen. I will make sure that it gets distributed tomorrow.
Okay, good.
You know, I hate to let, I'm sorry, didn't raise my hand. I apologize. Gwen, thank you for your work. You, you, you've been on, working on these trails and everything else. You, you spearheaded a lot of great grants for us and I, we really appreciate that. So, you know, when I, if I disagree on a location, nothing to do with what you're doing. I hope you appreciate that.
I do, thank you.
And, um, I appreciate your work. But this one, I, I don't think the driving force should be time. I think the driving force is, well, let's make the right decision. Because whatever that decision is, we're going to be, we're going to have to live with that decision and everybody else who's, who's, whose impact has to live with that decision. So I, quite honestly, if, if this thing has to be, get, get done by March, I don't think we can properly do it. And, and with, I think the important factor is impact from the public besides just us. And before we go forward with this project. I, I don't, I just don't see it. I think if we were, we would just be pushing to get it done. And what happens with that is the unintended consequences of your actions. And I can't think of what that would be now, but they happen. It it's it's just, you know, what is, it is uh, that thing that happens when when we try and move through just because there's that fund there right now and quite honestly, the way the bucks are flowing out of DC, I can anticipate that those funds will be continually available. But I can't say that. But at this time, I don't think we should pursue it. That's my opinion. Thank you. So.
Are you saying we shouldn't pursue it at all or we should look at other options?
Well, pardon me, that, I've always felt, yeah. This application. This particular application, we should pursue it. Absolutely. You have a system there. I do, we've worked on this thing for years to get to be in place and actually get, the trail is there. It's been marked out, it's worked out, it's there. The issue is where, where can you access, properly access it? The best place has always been at the head of it, head of the trail, one, one end to the other. And we have met, you know. You know, I, I've tried a couple of times, I mean, to try and find a location that works that is in 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 an area that is, doesn't impact uh, issues. And we've always run, run into it to some issue. But that doesn't mean there isn't one and that doesn't mean we can't find one. And.
I would like to add just one last piece.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Amanda, have a hand.
I'm done.
Uh, I would like to um, just add the conversation that, yes, there has been vandalism off trails. Uh, and I, my property has been recipient of vandalism coming back off of the town property, coming back on my property. It does happen and I don't want people to think that it doesn't happen, that this is impossible.
Okay, so. The original question.
I have a question, um, and I don't know if anybody knows the answer to this. So there's existing trails on this property, people do access them. So where are people currently parking that access? And if people are hopping on on South Road, are they just parking on the side of the road there? Has anybody ever seen?
I, I believe the only people who are using it are people who are, who are butters. They're walking in. Yeah. And Arlene, this, these maps are online.
I, I was, I figured out where it is now from the conversation.
Okay.
And I now caught myself up.
Okay.
Would have wanted to ask questions for clarification so that I could follow the conversations, but I.
You know, just go on the home, go on the homepage where it says reports and data and studies and just go down. You'll see Nathan Hill Corridor.
I know the Nathan Hill Corridor.
Okay.
I just didn't know if that was the trail you were talking about. Cause last thing you would have been trying to do is parking on Route six.
Yes. And the trail really isn't, it has not, never been officially opened or officially blazed because I've always been waiting for parking and, but people, the the butters, the uh, neighbors use it a lot and they've kind of forged, forged their own trails through there. Um, but once the, once there's, once there's parking established, then the town can announce public parking and it will be blazed, blazed in a really obvious way and we can do a map and um, you know, it can be, really open it up to the public and make it a public resource and asset.
It's not blazed yet.
No, it's informally blazed, I should say.
Okay. So it is being used.
It's a rugged trail.
Isn't that where it's almost?
Yeah, it'll always stay rugged, but it's.
It's not, not, nothing really.
So it's not even a mountain bike trail, it's a hiking?
Not at all.
No. Is it intended to be a mountain bike trail? Or?
That was never my intention. I I, I mean, might, some bicyclists will go anywhere. I I think there's some really tough areas on this property where, I mean, I certainly wanna, wouldn't wanna bring a bicycle on it. Some people might.
Going, yeah, going way back, we both, we have a long history on this thing. And the the initial, the initial intent was a quote, a hiking trail. Hiking mean no, no pathway being made, simply a market. Just like the old Blue Trails, and if you who who walk those, that's exactly was the, was the intent. And uh, the volunteers who actually walk, uh, wa- walk this and look to the different areas, the crossings and everything, that was, that's the uh, the criteria that they utilize. And you you were very much a part there. And and, and it was never intended like the quote, other trails that are out there, which are ADA accessible. So they're cut, they're path, and they're, they're, they're pathways. This is not, this is a walking trail, period. Nothing more. The same, and it extends beyond Bolton, it goes commentary and over forward. And when the, the, going back quite a long time ago, when the towns got together on this thing, when the state gave it to them, the intent was, that was the only thing that we would do, period. It would never be improved to anything more than just that. And that was uh, because for it to be having any effect, it had to go through all these other towns. And that's when the towns agreed to. So Gwen makes point, the key is for it to be utilized in a, in in the way it was meant to be. You really, we gonna have to figure out somewhere, we'll have a, 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 a start point where where people can properly park their cars and go from there. And it's not something that, when you look at this thing, and I'm not an obstructionist on this, but we looked at five or six parking spaces. This is not something where you can have a horde, horde of people going, but there are people going there. The issue becomes that, in in some part, that parking space becomes a magnet. Has nothing to do with the trail. So that's, that's always an issue. So it's, it's, it is concerning, it's where that location becomes. So. So, there we are. And I've talked too much. We're considering an act. Uh, do we have an act to consider?
No, we do not, we don't have, have, have enough information at this time, Mr. Jim.
So does this get moved to uh, next Thursday's agenda?
We can't sort of on Thursday's agenda.
Nope.
It's a special meeting, we're not.
We would have to have a special meeting? We have a special meeting?
You have to, you have to have enough time to post your agenda.
Right. And do we need an application put into the Army Corps? To find out what they're gonna say? There should be one, right?
I'm not, I'm not sure it's required, but.
They were, they requested you do it early in the planning stage. And this is, we're talking about planning at this point.
So we do have Joe Dillon's number.
I I have it, it just didn't, it didn't, it didn't get disseminated today.
So do we have, we'd have to put a date together for Tuesday, which we already have a meeting.
You already have a meeting on Tuesday.
At what time is that meeting?
I don't recall.
Uh, so a choice is Monday or Tuesday, I guess. If we're gonna schedule.
And we didn't set, I believe we didn't set the time because that's um.
No, it's on the bottom.
Yeah, so we, could we just, could we
Could be.
Put it on that, on that special meeting?
Plenty of time to put that on an agenda, yes.
That would be for February thirteenth. So you also wanna get on the P and Z agenda. Just get it.
So I'd like to make a motion to table this matter until Tuesday, February thirteenth.
And I will second that and the motion to table is not debatable.
All in favor? Aye, aye.
And I'd also like to make a motion to ask um, Jim to put, ask to request planning and zoning to put this on the February fourteenth agenda.
Consider it done.
And um, with the possibility of not going forward, just keeping that in the back of our mind. But I'd like to be able to secure the, a position on the agenda in case.
Fourteen?
Thirteen.
For no.
For the, for the planning and zoning is the fourteen.
For an eight, for an eight twenty-four, we thought.
Yeah. So that was, that was a motion, I, I, I made a motion, I don't know if you know if we needed one for that.
I don't think so, no. Um, consider it done.
Thank you.
That concludes the South Road parking lot for tonight. There's no more discussion to be had on that.
Derek, we have a five-minute recess.
Yes, I'd like to call for a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
I figured the South Road people are gonna leave. Thank you very much for coming, appreciate your input. Okay, we're gonna start this back up. So next on the agenda is consider an act on the notch road municipal center temporary building public tour date of facility. So I guess we need to know when the people will be.
I think, I think, I, I think you should agree on whether or not you wanna do it and I think you probably do. But I think we should table setting a date until things are really truly ready.
Okay, so we're gonna table that. Until, um, we'll see, so we wanna go out.
I listen, I should, I would say we should look at it at your March meeting.
Right.
Your March regular meeting, that would be my suggestion. But it does say consider an act, so you should actually take some action.
All right.
Probably, probably to table, if that's the action.
Okay.
I would vote and make a motion to table this until our March meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
It's not favorable. Motion to table is not favorable.
All in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Uh, seven C, consider an act on bid waivers for Novus.
And you have a letter in your package from the superintendent of schools. Um, it appears, so one of the issues that we continually have with the auditor and the the remedy, the remedy for this is to actually change our town ordinance. Our town ordinance says that uh, it it doesn't specifically say that we can purchase things off the state bid list. And although Novus is a service that we are purchasing off the state bid list and um, the Capital Region Council of Governments Purchasing Council, it appears that the, that the Board of Education has had a conversation with our auditor who intends to cite the Board of Education and the town of Bolton for selecting Novus off the state bid list without going out, out to bid. And he recommended to her that both was the uh, Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen retroactively consider a bid waiver for Novus. The Board of Education has already taken that action.
So we're looking for a motion to retrospectively approve a bid waiver for Novus, which I will so move and keep that auditor happy.
Well, delicately second that.
Any questions?
Can I request that you make an amendment that includes the reason why?
Oh, yes, thank you.
We are requesting.
I, I, I haven't biting my lip too hard to get, to get that part. Bec- due to a recommendation from the uh, auditor that to properly meet our existing regulations that the bid proper, the, the bid process that we use does not particularly conform to that process, therefore by taking this motion, it merely corrects it. How's that?
It's not gonna be.
I know that. And 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 it, I tried to make it as much a government uh, a motion as I possibly could.
I second the amendment.
And second, the motion, all in favor?
Oh.
Well, if we wanna have a discussion on this. Yeah, you can laugh. I just, he's doing a good job.
Well, I think the reason we're, we're applying for a waiver is not necessarily because we're get, you know, we're in violation, but because it was, we took them off the state bid list and therefore that is the reason why we didn't go to bid. And so I think that's the important part of the motion that the public should be aware of.
So, so I'll so amend my motion, thank you.
Okay. Oh, Portland. I second, I second the second amended motion.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Seven, six zero, six zero.
That's the scary part, making me make a motion.
Uh, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, what would it take to amend the town ordinance? Does that need to go to town meeting?
Or a public hearing and.
Public hearing and company.
And it's something we should actually look at because we face this.
It, it, it is on my list of things to do, but not while we're in budget season.
No.
Um, I, I, you know, my, what, what, in my brain, what I think we should consider and this will be a discussion for the board to have at the time. And maybe it's something that we discuss uh, when we set our retreat agenda. You know, my recommendation would be to consider, you know, amending the ordinance such that, you know, we can purchase off the state bid list in or from buying consortiums like HGAC and Sourcewell and the Capital Region Council of Governments Purchasing Council.
And actually, to your question, Amanda, I, I, I think that the selectmen approve ordinances, but they do have to go to public hearing first. I didn't want, I didn't want you to have the impression that town meeting passes ordinances.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, good, Paul, thank you.
Number seven, new business D. We've got a report from Gwen Marion referencing a meeting with Rod Parley and Deep about reporting ATV's on the trails.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be brief. Uh, Rod asked me to attend a meeting on January tenth with him and two DEP conservation officers. They were very nice, Vinnie and Alex. Rod's main issue was how to report illegal vehicular traffic on state trails. And the answer to that is you call eight six oh, four two four, three, 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 three. And I'm not being facetious, that really is what you should do. So if you are out on a trail and you see illegal vehicular activity, call that number. That number goes directly to the twenty-four hour DEP dispatch and then they relay that information to an officer. Now, that's the good news. The bad news is that there are only six officers that cover two and a half counties and so response time could be very slow or very slow.
And that's twenty-four hours, seven days a week.
Uh, yeah, yep. So that's a good number to to remember, especially if you're out hiking and if you lose trails, uh, remember that number. Uh, they also said, the officers also said you should, if you can, take a photo of the perpetrator because if you can, without aggravating the situation because then, then the officers can use color, clothing color, um, vehicle color to try to, to track them down. And if there's been past damage, there's really nothing they can do unless they have evidence. Um, the, and the DEP officers, conservation officers only cover state lands like the hot river trail, Bolton Knott State Park, but they don't cover town on property like Freya Park or privately on property. They said that they have no problem with our state troopers patrolling um, state, the state property. You know, there's overlap there, they had absolutely no problem with that. And they said that they have told Brian contented, contented that, so he knows that. And he also said that more patrols will be done, the more people who call. So, you know, if there's, if there's a ton of illegal activity at Freya Park and of there, and a lot of people are calling to complain about it, it'll rise to a higher level of priority for them.
The number?
Um, four, eight six oh, four two four, three, 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 three. Yeah, it's a quadruple three. Any questions?
Last year, we had a meeting with the DEP and with resident state troopers and the town of Manchester Police Department. And the question came up on the trail, that of us, Manchester, as we go into Manchester. What part of the trail is state trail, which part, what part of it is town trail? Which part of it is covered by a resident state trooper, which covered, which ones are covered by DEPCOS? And which property is covered by Manchester? It was very enlightening and we were told that there were two COs for our entire region, a conservation officer. So, um, and that's why it's very hard to get them to come out. But um, but it was a very enlightening meeting because of uh, distinct lines as to who reports what, who, and who responds to what and who files the reports.
If it's dirt, it's deep, if it's paved, it's DOT. But that was really the outcome of the meeting. So even, so even, even on the, the trails that you, that with the. So even, so even, even on the, the trails that you met with the deep about, it's a dirt trail, so ye- yes, it's okay for the state police to patrol, but deep has jurisdiction. So if they had an issue, they'd have to contact deep for arrest.
If it's.
It's interesting, but if it's paved, it's a DOT trail.
Right.
And state police have jurisdiction.
And that, the, and it's like.
So it was a very interesting meeting, but that was really the biggest takeaway. If it's dirt, it's deep. If it's paved, it's dot, and it's Connecticut State Bridge.
And that was due to an accident. Uh, it happened on, I forget. West Black, severely injurable.
Well, I got your number in my phone.
I'll say, is it dirt?
Dirt?
Uh, thank you, Gwen.
You're welcome.
Uh, glad you could do that. Now, a recommendation from the Finance and Administration Subcommittee and possible action on employee wages and benefits. Uh, did I see that? I didn't see that in my pack. That's supposed to be seven E. Did anybody have a seven E?
I don't know if there was a.
No, there was nothing.
I don't know if there was a, uh, any piece of paper to go with it.
So, uh, we boiled that down.
Do you want me to try to help you there?
Yeah, there wasn't a chart or anything.
So the, the Finance and, um, Administration Subcommittee met, and this was, this was based on a conversation that we'd had with um, the last Board of Selectmen who wanted to ensure that uh, wages and benefits were commensurate with other towns. And we looked at a spreadsheet, which was actually ended up, it's actually been updated, and we will get that to you. Uh, and the recommendation that the Finance Administration Subcommittee came out with was a couple of different things. One was to permit the highway foreman use of the town vehicle to go back and forth to work with some limited personal use so that he could do errands, um, on his way to and from work. And that would have a sunset clause with this employee so that the board could consider it at a future date. And that was based on looking at other towns and the fact that most other towns do permit that. Um, the other thing that we looked at was uh, wage increase for the a wage increase for the Recreation Director. And we talked about making a recommendation of three thousand dollars in this current fiscal year and another three thousand dollars next year based on um, meeting goals and objectives that were set forth in her annual evaluation. In effect, when she met with this board to talk about her um, budget, she actually reiterated the same goals and objectives that the Subcommittee had talked about. Um, the other, the other, uh, wages that we had talked about were the executive assistant in the Selectmen's Office based on increased responsibilities, a wage increase of two thousand dollars for this current fiscal year. And the other secretary in the Selectmen's Office, a, a one dollar per hour wage increase with a confidentiality clause added to her contract. And then we had met with Carrie Concatelli, and we looked at uh, wages in her department in order to be competitive. We felt that, you know, there needs to be some movement in the wages for the drivers and the other staff in her department. And we talked about a wage increase of one dollar an hour this year and covering physicals. And we would look at, uh, other wage increases in the budget for next year. I think that is complete.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Is there, uh, let's see, so we gotta consider an action on that. Uh, would anybody like to make a motion?
Well, I.
On that?
Well, I think we, aren't we, uh, so that's gonna tie in a couple of different budgets. Part of that's gonna be on your budget, right? The administrative budget.
Right.
Yeah, which is gonna be presented. Who said?
So, 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 so some of this already in, so we're talking, we're talking about changes that would be effective immediately.
Oh, okay.
So they would be a current year budget.
I misunderstood. Okay.
And one of the things I shared is that the, the the board that you previously sat on had asked me to
Right.
put a little money in the administrative budget in case we needed to do that, to make some of these wage adjustments.
Thank you.
That, that funding is in the current administrative budget if they, if it can't be covered under the budgets that it's gonna affect immediately.
Okay. Thank you. I, yeah. Sorry, I, I was, I was just. Okay, not thinking overworked. No.
So we're looking for a motion on this tonight?
If you so choose.
Or?
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the committee is here. You guys did a lot of work on it and study. I I just liked everybody's comment.
We all went through it and talked with Jim about it and talked about each topic. We were comparing their wages. It was my understanding that we were making a recommendation.
Right.
Based on that discussion to the board, to the full board tonight.
Okay.
And, and I wanted to make sure that we weren't just saying, yes, let's give increases unless they were tied to performance too. And so at that point, Jim gave very, uh, good reviews of both the secretary, who is getting the, um, actually all, all, all three, all three of the people. So there was more thought in it than just, it's not comparable to. And the chart that was prepared had some, we had some mistakes in it, so it was, yeah, so we did have, we did have some comparables to look at, but we also felt that there were other towns that, that could be better used as comparables. So we weren't just looking at it, well, we have to bump it up to meet some other towns' standard, but there's also.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate that. I'm assuming stuff like that happened, but I just wanted to hear, wanted to hear from the committee.
And our Recreation Director did come in tonight and say that she did pass her test, so now she's certified on the National Testing Program for Recreation. Yes, I mean.
So I listened to the entire recording, um, and went in and did some digging and some notes. So my biggest concern was, so I, for those of you that may not know, like, I've done HR for quite some time in my, my day job, um, and been in front of, like, I've had liability cases and discrimination cases against us, right? So like, knowing, you know, what you're up against in terms of, you know, potential liability. So um, one of my questions is, is, you know, all these folks, is there a job description and are there ranges posted on those job descriptions, right, of, of, you know, the salary for this position is going to be fifty K to sixty K? Cause that's, if we don't have something like that in place, that's someplace we wanna try and get to, right? I mean, in terms of long-term goals, because quite frankly, and I'm not, I don't know whether these people deserve a raise or not, I'm not saying they don't. Regardless of how good an employee is, you don't want to go outside of that range, right? The, the value of a position is the value of that position regardless of the person that's there. And so the decisions we should be making about payroll and salary are based on the jobs and the job description. And so I think we should have access to the job descriptions for these folks. And then, again, comparables, I appreciated the table, but the comps weren't very comparable, right? Like, half of them were in towns that are double the size of us. If you look at the square mileage, right, only two of the other towns were similar sizes to us when you consider Sean's department, right? Um, so I just think we need to do more due diligence. Like, when I've done these comp studies, it's taken me months to do some of this work. I, I just think that because these raises are permanent, right, and because a lot of these folks are in unions and are set to get increases anyways, we just owe the public a little bit more due diligence before we implement you know, these raises. That was mine. My thought.
So if I could clarify for you, there is only one individual that's part of a union.
Okay.
That we're discussing.
I was trying to follow.
There's only, there's only one individual. I believe we have job descriptions for everybody, but I don't believe that there's a salary range on any job description that we have.
Okay. And that's a move that, like, we may wanna consider.
But I will tell you that, you know, Gwen asked us to do a little more due diligence as part of this by including the, um, the, the towns in our ERG. And the numbers actually show, it, it actually comes out worse.
Right.
It show, it show, it shows a greater wage disparity than the chart that you currently have.
But the ERG is based on quality of the school system? Is that how?
It's based, it's school-based, but I don't know in what way.
Cause I did look at some of those towns, and those towns are still double the size of ours, right? Like, I looked up Granby, and like, I was trying to compare population and size. Um, that's kind of my standards. And then, of course, right, just because an executive assistant is called an executive assistant here doesn't mean that the executive assistant, right, cause we know that Kathy does HR and does the, the, um, emergency management, and so obviously probably another executive assistant doesn't have that on her. So considering differences in what the job means, right? So sometimes you have to call towns and ask what the responsibilities are when you do these, these comps. Um, so I do think maybe we could do a little bit more due diligence in, in that area to see, because like, when I was comparing two towns that were more similar in size, so like, the first half of that chart that you guys looked at, right? Like, we weren't, when you took the average of some of those towns minus Andover, cause Andover's data was wrong, I was able to find Andover's correct data, um, we aren't as far off from average for some of these positions, was my.
We're actually, sorry.
Oh, no.
One of my points was that we are actually a little higher than average based on our population.
On most of them.
Right.
On most of them.
Right. So if you do a per capita cost.
Per capita, we're above average. We're, we're below the average in population, but we were above average in pay in many of them.
And now I can tell you, like, based on personal experience, cause I lived in Andover, right? I know we in Bolton are offering a lot more to our residents than they get in Andover, right? And that may be the case in some of these towns as well. Um, so also something to take into consideration, right? It's, it's a lifestyle that we're we live here in Bolton, and that, you know, but just lots of things to take into consideration, I think. And we're not talking about massive amounts of money, but I do think we need to establish more of a process for doing something like this, and follow that process moving into the future as well if we ever do something like that again, this again.
So we followed this, I will tell you that we followed the same process that we did about two years ago with our, uh, senior social services director. And we, you know, in, in sim- similar to the executive secretary, right, it's kind of a hybrid position. And so when we looked at that particular position with regard to, to senior services, we were overpaying, but when you looked at it with regard to social services, we were underpaying. So, you know, there is a little bit of common sense that you have to apply to some of these things.
Yep.
Uh, but, but this is the process that we established when we reviewed that, and so we followed the same process.
Uh, yeah, we, we only did the, uh, so Sean's the only one who got benefit out of anything, but the.
Please don't use name.
Oh, sorry. The highway director was the only one who got anything out of that. And the, the others were uh, definitely lower in comparables that were, that are really worthy of holding on to for their positions, cause they're, they're very good at them.
And that was our final conclusion, which is why we decided to, to give the, the raises we did. Or recommend.
Yes, command.
Um, which is the one who's part of the union, sorry?
Uh, I.
Okay. And then, the other concern I had is, or question I wanted to ask, right, is for our administrative assistant? Not.
Yeah.
Not the executive administrative assistant. Is it her job that requires confidentiality and discretion, or is it the location of her office? Because if it's the location of her office, that's on us, and we just need to move her. Like, that doesn't warrant, uh, right, like, I, I, I just wanna make sure it's a function of the job and the work she's doing and not her location in the office.
I feel it's both, right? I mean, it is a, it is a function of our physical space. I mean, it, it is impossible to have a private conversation anywhere in town hall unless she locks herself in the mall.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's just, it's just not possible. Right? So, so some of it is based on physical space, but some of it is based on the need for her to be able to do things that we can't currently task her with.
So do we make a motion to move this?
Well, we're based on the conversation I heard tonight. I'll, I'll move that we adopt the recommendation of the, uh, Finance Subcommittee.
Uh, do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye.
I'm gonna abstain.
Aye.
And one abstention.
Aye, yes, one abstention and one.
Can we get the updated?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we need a report on the Veterans Commission.
No, I'm up already.
There's a chance.
Okay, um, two things. Uh, at the last, well, going back, the Veterans Commission had, uh, requested that the Board of Selectmen look at the, um, the assessment that, uh, certain, well, the veterans who are veterans during combat eras do get a reduction in their assessment. It's, um, the state has a certain level, and the town had in, in the past added to it. They had requested that we, the board, look at it and perhaps increase it on their behalf. And I was at their meeting, and I said, well, my suggestion is that they meet with the, uh, Finance Subcommittee with what they're looking to do and go forward with it. We're looking at it, we had looked at it before, and some of the data that was brought forward was, was just off.
Yep.
The numbers were off, and, um, so they've gone back and the number of individuals that, that it, uh, were impacted was actually reduced significantly to the number that we were looking at. Uh, so, um, anyhow, based on that, uh, they had asked that, that the, uh, sub, a Subcommittee would, would meet and, uh, they could come forward before a Subcommittee and present it. Would, and we're looking, and looking long-term, cause they also, and we had, the previous board had mentioned the importance of once we have, once a Subcommittee has a concept of where they might wanna go, we'd like to have a public forum. So that the, because this is, you know, this is a big deal, and once you said it, you said it. And, and, uh, and the, um, the Veterans Commission was, was fine with that. They feel it's important that it does have community support. So that was the request. That they meet with, with, with the Subcommittee, and they're not a rush on it because uh, they know that we're in the budget process now that, that March would be, if they could meet in March, they would be fine with that. That's one thing. On the other side, you all have your marching shoes on. The board was invited to participate in Memorial Day Parade and as part of the, uh, the lead marchers that, that go out there. So I, I, on behalf of them, I was to present to you that to the board. That's it.
That's a good question. Is the proposal a reduction in the assessment of real estate, uh, the, the real estate assessment reduction?
It's a, yeah, it's an assessment on, it can be, right now, it, it can be either personal property or real estate. It doesn't, there, there's no definition, because some people may live in town. Though, there isn't, there is no veteran who currently, uh, received benefits who do not own real estate in town. It's, it's all real estate.
It's a real estate.
Yeah.
It's a reduction in the assessment of the real estate.
Right. It, it, what it is, yeah, it, it's exactly what it is. I, I think now it's like three thousand.
Uh, okay.
Some, I, I, I don't recall exactly what it is. Pardon me? Dollar with the assessment was, whatever it is, but that's. They were gonna put, put together, uh, some, some, some data for, for the board to look at, and also I think part of it is, okay, gives the board a chance to look at, well, if you do A, B, or C, this is the impact. And let's talk about it. That's it. Thank you very much. I want.
Thank you, Bob. Properties and Administration, properties and facilities.
So I think we have a couple of things to report on with regard to facilities. One, one is. facilities. One one is the Town Hall Annex Building. They've actually started moving s- stuff into the building at this point. We are currently waiting for fiber optic cables to come in. And then fiber will be run between the existing Notchwood Municipal Center and the Town Hall Annex Structure. Um, John and his team, I believe, have been in communication with both the registrars and the finance folks, and they're talking about how how to and when to exact moves of people. Uh, and the things that they need immediately to be able to conduct business. But I I don't have a date on which that's happening, but I believe that things are happening uh pretty quickly at this point. I've also had a series of meetings with the folks from Will Scott, and we officially accepted the building. And based on when we were able to start working in on the building, um, if you remember, there's a three month period that we did not pay any rent and we did not pay for the setup costs of this, of the unit. And they actually have a new person who's in charge of those things at uh Will Scott and one of the things he said is, well, if you weren't happy with it and we delivered it, we probably should have offered you a new building. And I said, yes, you probably should have, but you didn't. And at this point, your company and my team have too much effort into this structure to be changing structures. I I need to be able to move people. And so we agreed that based on when we were able to get in and start doing work on it, that we would pay one and a half months of that back rent. Um, and they have committed in writing to me uh that in the event that we continue to have issues with the roof, that they will consider putting on a new single membrane roof when the weather is appropriate. But they've also promised anytime that we have an issue, they will be out within twenty four hours. Probably doesn't hold true on the weekends, but that promise was a verbal promise. So we are moving in the right direction with this facility. And it's very timely. The other thing that um that we have to report on is the progress with going out to bid on demolition for Notchwood Municipal Center. I had completed the bid, I had had prepared, I sent it out to uh two architects that I have relationships with. And they said, we think that they both came back with the same sage advice and said, we think you need to reconsider your tact here. We think that based on what your need is, that you would be better off to change your RFP to a designed bid RFP. We feel that it will save you money uh and probably time. And so although I did not, I was not, yes, you need a pen.
Yes, yeah, it just ran. Oh, that is fine. Thank you. Sorry, sorry to interrupt.
So John, John Buttermogich and I are working on uh adjusting that RFP so that it is an RFP for design bid services, which means that likely what would happen is we'd get a contractor that would bid on the project and they would bring in their architect and engineer to to provide the, you know, shop drawings that were needed in order to complete the project. They felt that it would be cheaper. And the fact that we'd only have to go out for one RFP uh would actually be be saving us a little bit of time. So we're we're currently working on that. Uh, if we don't finish it this week, we will certainly finish it next week and get it out.
They have their own in-house people.
So they have, they have relations to, you know, contractors have relationships with architects and engineers that they work with on a regular basis. Um, and what what he said to me is, he said, you know, Jim, I would love to bid on this for you. But no architect that I know, no engineer that I know is gonna be able to be competitive. It's such a small job for us. That the the best thing that you can do is to go out for this uh with design bid.
And if I may, it eliminates going at eliminates the the issue of, well, he said we should do it this way, she said we should do it that way. If it's one entity, it's one entity. If there's an issue, you're dealing with one entity. Having had to deal with the other issue in the past, um, I I did, I find this to be a much more effective and efficient way of doing it. And I I think that's the way we should go.
Very good. Are you done with that?
Yeah. Uh, well, well, the only, let me just say this, the other thing is, we do have the completed um schematic for the Heritage Farm Trail. I think it would be great for the the Board of Selecting Facilities and Public Safety Committee to take a quick look at that before we set up uh an opportunity for another public informational meeting on it. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I I think it would be good to, you know, vet it out at that level before um we bring it back to the public. So Jo- Joe did tell me last week that, late last week, that it was ready for us to take a look at. Sounds like everybody's kind of in agreement with that.
Yeah, I think it would actually, i- if it's possible, have a walk. Just have the committee walk it and look at the plan at the same time, just lay eyes on it. I think it's just much more um i- informative when you actually see.
Let me, let me see what I can do to set that up.
Great.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And there's no snow on the ground, so it's pretty easy to do it.
If you set it up, thanks.
It's easier to say now, it's a sunny day and it's nice.
Yes.
Uh, okay, so I guess we move on to our budget report.
You have that in your packet. Uh, the one thing that we continue to look at and are a little bit concerned about uh is the one line that shows up in gray, which is our waste, is our waste collection. The, you know, the tip, the tipping, we're disposing of more trash than than we estimated based on, you know, previous history. And of course, you know, we knew what the tipping fees were gonna be this year, they're higher than they were last year. And so we're we're concerned that we're gonna be light in that line item somewhere between fifty and seventy five thousand dollars. So we're we're gonna have to continue to monitor that and may look to have to look to move funds into that line item in order to be able to satisfy our requirements for the rest of the year. And you will see on Thursday night when we look at that piece of our budget, um it's not one we could keep flat.
Obviously, yeah.
But that's really the only concern that we have with the budget currently. Everything else is on, is on track.
Even with all the storms and the weekend and nighttime.
We build that in, you know, and it's interesting that we have, we haven't spent a lot of time with plows down. But we've spent a lot of time out there sanding and salting. Um, we we just ordered another load of salt. So I think we're at about five hundred tons of salt for the year, as well as sand, which is not atypical. We typically purchase around five hundred tons for winter. Salt, salt shed is currently full. Um, so we're, we're in good shape.
No more snow, no more.
And we'll be in really good shape for the beginning of next year if we don't use the salt.
Yeah.
Is there any more questions on the budget? On the tax collector?
Well, as usual, she provides you her monthly report.
That's dated twelve thirty one twenty three.
Yep. Co- collections are, you know, a- as always, they are very good. I think that, you know, the it's pretty self-explanatory here, but um, you know, she she does, she does an extraordinary job.
Indeed.
And always has.
Is there any comments on the tax plan? I received a um notice from State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, wants to be notified if we're doing any work on SR five thirty three, which is Lake Street. They're gonna be paving that point seven one miles uh in the spring. Uh, I'll forget it's a date. Under in place. So if anybody's got any questions about that, that's what the state is gonna be paid, and that's it. So first selections report. Well, I guess I'm just busy in meetings, the budget. Uh, I'm going to Connecticut Countryside tomorrow, which is the uh in Mansfield. Tour of a Yukon Building and then some socializing after that. And that's a it's a consortium between Bolton, Coventry, Mansfield, and Talend. Uh, and they they try to just coordinate their business together and try to promote business and so. I'll say, I think Patrice usually goes to that.
She won't be, I don't think she'll be there this week. I think she's away, but.
And who else has gone to that? There's somebody.
Well, sometimes I attend those those things. I will not be available to go to that uh this time. Um, Stephanie, I believe, is going, our rec director, because it's not just, it's about promoting Bolton businesses, but it's also about promoting the towns and the recreational opportunities that exist in both, in in all four towns. Um, so it's, it's really, it it's kind of taking the place of your Economic Development Commission in that regard.
Yeah, even includes uh promoting the Heritage Farm.
Heritage Farm.
And our, you know, hiking trails and things like that that exist.
Uh, and then Thursday is the cross-town meeting of the Aqua Tour. So I'll be attending that. Are you going to?
I will be there, yes.
Not sure who else is gone.
I think it's just you and I, Glenn, Bolton.
Okay. Uh, and then moving on, we have the Administration Officers' Monthly Report.
So I'll hit on a couple of things that I think are important, that, you know, I did, I was able to provide you a written highlights this month, as I try to do every month, but don't always get to it. Uh, one of the things that we did recently is we participated in a migrant webinar with demos. That is becoming an issue that more and more is impacting the state of Connecticut. And they are highly recommending that we put together just a small task force and plan for the eventuality, you know, what would we, and the question they asked is what what would we do if a busload of migrants showed up in Bolton? And and we're being told that, you know, soon we would have to try to manage that issue for twenty four to forty eight hours. Uh, at which time we would get assistance from the Department of Emergency Management and Home Management Security. So we are in the process of trying to plan a meeting so that if this ever becomes an issue for Bolton, that we actually have a plan and it's not adjusted time, you know, figure it out on the fly then. And I think, you know, what I've been told is probably the closest area that it has a significant impact to us right now is Sturbridge. Um, I guess in Sturbridge is a, and what we've been told is that there is a hotel in Sturbridge that has been um fully, that is fully occupied by by migrants. We don't have a hotel, so, you know, that's one of the things that poses issues for us is, you know, housing, how many people we would expect on a busload, you know, in all of those social and economic issues that happen as a result of that, security, you know, in in all of those things. So that is something that we are working on. Uh, we're trying to put together a meeting, we're looking at the appropriate stakeholders, and we're trying to figure out where we um go from there.
That include calling ICE, cause this really ticks me off and uh coming from an immigrant family uh who had to go through the whole stinking process and wait in line like everybody else. When I see this, it blows my mind and I would have ICE come in, process them. If you're legal, we'll we'll accommodate you. If you're not, you go back in.
Can I just, so I will chime in and say, you know, you mentioned Sturbridge, there are definitely families in Connecticut. Um, so I work for the homeless service system. We field calls from two one one, right, for people that are homeless. And we're getting three to four families a day um calling in to just our agency um who are reporting that they are, you know, immigrants without a place to go. So it is on the radar of legislators, it is on the radar of, you know, the homeless response system and I can tell you, we don't have space for all these folks either. Um, we're just completely overwhelmed, uh so. It's definitely a budding issue.
Um, we have a like young, younger person in town who's been working with this population, so I'd like to share her name with you. I think it's always good to involve and and buy young ones.
Yeah. Very good. So another, another thing, um, you know, just, just to be aware of, um, you know, part of the, i- in in the meeting with the CCM Legislative Committee, just in case you're not aware, there there is a task force that's been formed uh to work toward the elimination of the automobile tax, which as we know, would have a pretty significant impact on Bolton. So, you know, we're gonna continue to keep an eye on that and see what comes out of that task force. So I don't, I don't see that there's, there is not likely to be imminent changes. The task force probably has to generate a report. The report will probably have to go before the legislature at some point and, you know, be acted on. Those things, just having been part of a task force before uh for legislative matters, it doesn't happen quickly. Um, but but it 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 hasn't gone away. And it is something that would impact Bolton pretty significantly. The other thing that's pretty interesting, I think, you know, and having meetings with the Capital Region Council of Governments, they have received a regional performance incentive grant and based on I think the cutting edge things that Bolton has done with uh the share, the shared services, in particular, our building department, you know, we are on the radar and we're working with the Capital Region Council of Governments in the town of Marlborough. And we're piloting a pro, we're we're probably going to be piloting a program um creating a mentorship program for young men and young women to be able to move into the field of building inspection. Uh, I also sit on the Capital Region Municipal Task Force. I don't even know if that's the right title, but um, you know, there is a shortage of municipal workers. Municipal workers tend to be very specialized in the things that they do. And um and there's just a a real shortage. And building inspection assessors, um, dog catchers, those tend to be some of the real hot button issues right now amongst Crog towns. Um, and so, but we're actually, I've met with Crog, Marlborough's met with Crog, and we have a a meeting set sometime in February that we're gonna meet together. It'll probably be about a year from now before this would kick off. The idea is that the ARPAP program would probably pay nearly a hundred percent, you know, for the first year of of an intern's time, and they would split time, you know, between the two towns. And over a period of time, as this individual um is able to do more and more in the towns, the towns would potentially pick up more of the cost. But the idea of, um, you know, at the end of, at the end of the 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 service of this, you know, hopefully, one of the towns that the individual is working with would be able to absorb them as an employee. Otherwise, we would help them, you know, find a job out in the market.
Oh, so I misunderstood what this was. So we're trying to get an intern that we are mentoring to become, to fill one of those roles?
Right.
Oh, I thought we were creating a program to go out into like high schools and recruit people to start filling those roles. Like, you have to think it big, right?
We're we're already doing that as well. So the the um the Connecticut Building Officials Association sponsored two schools this year uh out of, out of their funds. And we are working with the State Building Inspector's Office as well as technical high schools and colleges and universities to get this as part of their curriculum. This is something that I've been working on for about four years. We haven't done a lot in the last month, although we do have a meeting upcoming up in the next month. Uh, but we've been working on this for a very long time. Um, and it's, it's really. And it's, it's really. The hard part is, you know, we've done this before. We've actually sponsored schools before. It's, it's not inexpensive. Actually, the Connecticut. Builders Association also co-sponsored with us. And there was one other group that put up a significant amount of funds. We have to buy code books for all of these young men and young women who want to do this and it's, it gets expensive. We have to pay for the curriculum. We have to get building inspectors to go in and help teach the curriculum. So so it's a, you know, it is a lot of moving pieces to it. And this year we have two, two technical schools. That are part of the program. And the hope is that we are, because we have, we're now in touch with the right people. The goal is to be able to get the state to be able to pick this up. And make it both part of their technical school system and part of their college and university program. Where they're already teaching. Construction technology type classes. So it is happening on that level as well. Thought there was one other thing. I think that's it for now, unless, unless anybody has questions on the.
I have a couple of questions. Do it, go ahead.
No, 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 no. Go ahead.
One, I think I had asked last month and if you could report on how much of the community connectivity grant. Has been spent.
Yep, and I've asked, I've asked that that be worked on. That is being worked on. I don't have the report.
Okay, so maybe for the next, maybe for next month. And then also, when are we going to set a date for that meeting to talk about setting a date? For the retreats?
I think Kathy and I picked a date that we're going to run by you at your next meeting.
Okay, good. And the last thing is, I I. If, do you think you could ask Kathy to send supplemental materials by email? Because I I happened to just go online before, a couple hours before the meeting, and I saw those additional letters of opposition to South Road. But they didn't come in to us. Via email, unless, did anybody, did somebody, did anybody else get them actually?
They, they came in, I don't think they came in in time. They came in very, very late.
Oh.
Those, those three letters came in at like five thirty or something.
Oh, okay, I see.
She had, she had Sue Ellen post them because we're, we're trying to really make sure that we put everything. That you guys are discussing online, but they just did not come in in time.
Okay.
So she printed copies, she printed two sets of copies so that, you know, we could share them with the group.
Okay, I think the, that there was a two supplemental packets and the other one was a set of minutes. So. That seems like that would have been able to be sent earlier. It just that I I, it was just by happenstance that I happened to go on the website and I saw, oh, there's, there's additional information here. So. When, if at all possible, Kathy, come into email.
Absolutely. We'd certainly try to do that. That is, that is our normal. But in in this case, those just didn't come in.
All right. Good, thank you.
Bob?
I was going to suggest that we deal with our minutes at our next meeting. Anybody feel like hanging around here for another twenty minutes?
We accept them all together or do we have?
I, that would be a good motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minute from. The January second.
Intere.
Intere. Oh, no.
You gotta read what they.
Yeah, the January second regular meeting, the January sixteenth special meeting, the January sixteenth budget workshop number one, the January twenty third. Special meeting and budget workshop number two. The January thirtieth and special meeting and budget workshop three, and finally, the February first budget workshop for minute.
So back in your motion. With the one correction of having the Rose Farm changed to Heritage Farm.
And I have other, I have one very minor question about this. It's, it's.
Which one question?
It's the, it's the regular minutes. It's the minutes of our, of our January second regular meetings. It's item seven A. I am listed as having seconded the motion. I'm quite sure I didn't because I knew I was going to abstain and I don't, I think it would have been weird if I had. Seconded the motion, planning to abstain. So if anybody can remember, if you seconded the motion, we'll change it. If not, we could just, just leave it. Because it's not, it's not a big deal. So it's seven A.
We're down to very bottom.
Yeah, you, you did, no, you did not make, you did not make this one.
It's, it's on page four of those, of that. Not, really not a big deal. We could leave it.
I don't recall. I made the motion.
Yeah.
It was Pam.
Anybody remember?
I think it's probably me.
I think it's probably Pam that seconded.
So that's the other correction. Seven A, the motions were seconded by Pam Sawyer.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say one more thing before you adjourn?
Well, we got. So is there any other discussion? So this motion is. By Amanda and seconded by Bob. And all in favor?
I, 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 so that's six, four, one, absent.
And before we adjourn, we have one other comment.
Gwen, you had asked for clarification at the last AP meeting about. A payment that indicated it was for Town Hall Expansion.
Yes, right.
The community septic system was originally. Proposed as a step towards Town Hall Expansion. So that's what those charges were, was for work on the community septic.
Okay, great. Thank you for checking on that.
And he said he would try to recode it so that it didn't show up that way in the future.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And we want to set a time for the. February thirteenth meeting. Which. Is Tuesday of next week.
There are a lot on the agenda.
It's a fair, it's a fair bit.
We're adding the discussion of, of the parking area and also.
And, and started at six thirty?
I say six thirty is fine.
Yep.
That worked.
Yep.
Six thirty is it? Anybody want to make a motion that we adjourn? Any second, all in favor?